Yeah, this one's bad. He's got him. His whole underside is covered.
Back at the deer tagging station in Wells, Lubelsik climbs into the back of a truck to pluck ticks from a deer brought in by Johnny Fleming and Dave Laval. Fleming says just the other day, he picked 17 ticks off himself while hunting. Laval says it's a stark contrast to their recent experience hunting for moose in northern Maine.
We had nothing on us, not one tick. And we was in the woods for a week.
That contrast between northern and southern Maine is diminishing, says Lubelsik. Stemming the tide on vector borne diseases is difficult, he says, but it can be done if enough people recognize the importance of controlling the spread of ticks and mosquitoes and take precautions against them. For Here and Now, I'm Patty White.
And later today on All Things Considered, NPR'S Emily Fang reports on an unusual culinary craze in China that soared from obscurity to national fame during this pandemic. The story of snail noodle soup later today. Tell your smart speaker to play NPR or ask for your local member station by name. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Tanya Mosley in Los Angeles.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the Museum of Science in Boston, providing pre-K through grade 12 engineering curricula, from We Engineer to Engineering the Future, with teacher guides, storybooks, kits, and videos, all designed to fuel dynamic STEM education. More at MOS.org.
Once I started to get these assessments and really look at them, I had a much better understanding of why civilian casualties were happening and why the military was unaware of them beforehand.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on the Daily from the New York Times.
Tune in for the Daily weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Kathy Baskey Young, executive coach, working with leadership teams to accelerate their development, alignment, and effectiveness. Kathy Baskey Young, KBYoung.net. And Wordsprint, serving Roanoke with Phil and the New River Valley with design, print, and mail services. Wordsprint.com. And our listener supporters.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Funding for Here and Now comes from...
The January 20th, January 18th, 2022 Roanoke City Council regular session is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beszich?
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a former president. Do we, uh, uh, Mr. Spencer, do we need to do that part with, for Mr. Beszich?
Uh, if we can just do the resolution, I think it all takes care of itself, since this is a limited state of emergency.
I got you. All right, you do that now. All right. Let me welcome everybody and let me say our invocation will be delivered by Councilmember Cobb, followed by the mayor, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So this time I'd ask everybody to stand and Councilmember Cobb, the invocation.
Following the hostage-taking incident at Beth Israel in Collyville, Texas, late last week, I offer this prayer of blessing and solidarity with Temple Emmanuel and Beth Israel here in Roanoke and the Jewish community throughout our nation. Blessed are you, divine and infinite one, great guardian of the universe, who showers goodness upon all, because we are all deserving of goodness. Blessed are you who guides us in the light and in the right directions. Blessed are you who watches over and protects us by sending guardians our way. Blessed are you who empowers us to protect ourselves from harm of any kind, from harming ourselves, from harming others, from harming the world around us. Blessed are you who empowers us to bring goodness upon ourselves by making healthy and self-loving choices in our lives. May our own goodness, protection, and empowerment continue. And may we all know, see, and feel without doubt the goodness that exists within ourselves, within everyone, within everything. May the infinite one who has bestowed these blessings of goodness continue to shower them upon those who are safe and especially upon those who are in need and unsafe in the world. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Cobb, and for the invocation. And I want to welcome everybody to our session this afternoon and at 7 o'clock today. The first order of business is I'm going to call on a city attorney or the city manager for a walk-on resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a walk-on resolution. The purpose is just to acknowledge the limited statewide state of emergency that's been declared by the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia in Executive Order Number 84. This authorizes the city council to meet virtually during this limited statewide state of emergency, and that is one of the reasons why Mr. Beszich may participate virtually and not count against his limited number under the Code of the Commonwealth. And also just recognizes that other boards and commissions of council may meet virtually during this limited state of emergency.
All right, thank you. If there are motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on that?
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Beszich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM and Saturdays from 10 AM to 5 o'clock PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing in pass. Announcement. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two vacancies. Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, one vacancy. Tour and Advisory Board, one vacancy, which will be a citizen at large. The Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority, one vacancy, which will also be a citizen at large. And you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application for the above-mentioned vacancies. Or you can call the city's clerk's office, who's accepting, who will guide you through this. And let me say, as a council, we are always pleased to have our citizens step forward to work on boards and commissions. And so I would encourage you to do that, and it's an easy process, and our clerks, the clerk's office will guide you through that. So we look forward to receiving your application. The city's clerk's office is accepting applications for two upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office expiring on June 30th, 2022. Three-year terms of office will commence July 1st, 2022, and end on June 30th, 2025. Incumbent School Board trustees are the Syria H. Smith and Joyce W. Watkins. Application and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees of the Roanoke City School Board are available on the city of Roanoke, Roanoke's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov, or may be obtained by contacting the city's clerk's office, Room 456, North C. Taylor Municipal Building, which is located at 215 Church Avenue Southwest, between the hours of 8 o'clock AM and 5 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday. And this is important. The deadline to receive applications is Thursday, March 10th, 2022, at 5 o'clock PM. For questions and/or additional information, please contact our city's clerk's office, and that number is 540-853-2541, or by email at clerk@roanokeva.gov. All right? Thank you. Item number two is presentations and acknowledgements. We have none this afternoon. And item number three is a hearing of citizens upon public matters. And this city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. And if deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers that have signed up today?
No, we do not have any speakers at this time.
All right, thank you. Item number four is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I would like to ask that C5 be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussions.
All right. Is there a, do we need a second on that?
I make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, uh, a motion has been made that C...
C5 be removed.
C5 be removed from the consent agenda. Uh, you don't need to call a roll on that?
Um, yes, we can call a roll.
Is that a voice? I don't do it.
All right. Okay. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. I'd have it. All right. Now we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I make that motion to move for the consent agenda to be approved as amended.
Second.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, I think we need a roll call on this for the amended consent agenda.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Beszich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the consent agenda as amended has been approved. All right, now.
Thank you. Item C5, I just have a question, more of an observation with regards to the city's manager's transfer report. And my question just happens to be based on the code section that says that the director of financial file quarterly to the city council, any city manager transfers. And I noticed that the quarterly report for September, ending in September, was being filed jointly with the second quarter. And I just had a question asked to the purpose was behind that reasoning for filing it late.
And I'll answer part of that, then I'll ask Amelia to answer the second part of that. The first part is actually, you did approve, you did receive that report on October 18th. So you did receive the first quarterly report on October 18th. There are some carryover items that are reflected in this, and I'm going to let Amelia add anything else she needs to. There are some items that come at the end of the year that we carry over into the first quarter of the year that we don't report until they're actually audited. That's what's included in this. But the bulk of what was in that quarterly report, you received on October 18th.
Oh, thank you.
I'll just say good afternoon to everyone. And in response to your question regarding the transfer report on a quarterly basis, there was an error on our part. We did transmit that first quarter to you twice. It was transmitted on October the 18th, and it was in error included again in the materials that you have today.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. The period 13 transfer information is a result of audit activities, and we typically do not transfer that information to you all until our audit activities are concluding, which is why we are transmitting that today.
Okay. So we're getting to, okay. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. And with that said, Mayor, if I could, I'd make the motion that the report be received and filed.
All right. All right. That report will be received and filed. We don't need to do any voting on that. Thank you.
Just all in favor?
All right. All in favor of being received and filed? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I'd have it. We will receive it and file it. All right. We're now down to item number five on the regular agenda with the public hearing. Uh, we have none today. Item number six is petitions and communication. And this is today, we have a presentation by Caption Call to introduce the program and share information in connection therewith. Ms. Mason of Anthem, an Anthem representative, and Ms. Motter of Caption will be presenting to us today, and the mayor and the vice mayor sponsored them, and I look forward to hearing from them. So you all, uh, who's the spokesperson? Ms. Mason?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Glad to be here. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, and council members and friends, leaders. My name is Bettina Mason, and I'm the territory rep for Anthem Healthkeepers here in Roanoke. I'm based in Roanoke. However, my territory runs from all of southwest Virginia, from Bristol, Virginia, I always like to use hand movement, I used to be a teacher, to Harrisonburg, Albemarle County, Louisa, and also here in the Roanoke Valley. So I'm here to introduce myself. I have a team of three field service reps. Their name is Jessica Pacente, Sharon Terry, and Dwayne Church. And so if you have any Medicare information and/or needs, we are here for a resource. I'm working on a project for social workers, case managers, care coordinators, and caregivers. So look out, we're coming, we're coming up with a lot of grassroots programming for that. So all that said, I am partnered with Caption Call. I saw Lisa, and we partnered together on several programs together. I thought this is an outstanding program, and I don't like to keep things to myself, I want to share it with my community. I want to be the resources. I came back to Roanoke, can I turn around too? I came back to Roanoke to be a part of the community and also to be a part of the solution. So I am a resource. My name is Bettina Mason with Anthem Healthkeepers, and I'd like to introduce Lisa Motter from Caption Call.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Lee, and Vice Mayor White Boyd, and council members. I'm very excited to be able to be here today just to share a little bit about the connection and how I am very passionate about raising awareness and increasing advocacy on a street level for the citizens of Roanoke that have hearing loss. There are great programs out there through state and federal funding, there's support systems through great hearing care centers and healthcare providers. But many of us that aren't acknowledging that we have a problem don't always go out and seek these resources unless we run across them at a community event or at a place of worship or some type of sharing venue. And I have been blessed, there's actually a, another one of this type of woman, Bettina, in the Anthem Network located in Hampton Roads area by the name of Alexis. She's a powerhouse as well, and we pair up and bring in and align ourselves with great community partners to provide added benefits, added resources to people with all types of needs. A lot of people think that hearing loss is solely age-related. I can tell you, I have a 22-year-old son that has moderate to profound hearing loss from a sports-related injury when he was about nine or 10. I, myself, am 55. I have mild hearing loss with tinnitus. So I am very, very grateful and thankful that you do have captioning during your meetings, so that is very beneficial for not just the seniors that we deal with. And we've all been probably impacted in some form or fashion, personally or professionally, when it comes to hearing loss, and we may not be aware it. So the information that I provided you in the packets just gives you some reading material to kind of raise a little bit greater awareness on the statistics, the numbers. One thing that I always try to relate in a business arena is that studies kind of indicate unattended hearing loss, people that aren't able to or don't seek out, say, hearing aids, cochlear implants, generally make about $20,000 less per year. They are at greater risk for having job insecurity. Children, one in five teens have some type of detectable hearing loss right now. So those kind of statistics are in this information, just to help each and every one of you know personally, but on a professional level, that any engagement in your departments, in your community outreach, in your building of new facilities, you know, having greater hearing accessibility technology involved, whether it be hearing loops for your arts and community centers and things like that, those go, those go very far and wide to help so many that we don't realize that struggle. Caption Call, and I'm going to try and wrap this up real quick for you, because I have so much passion for all levels of integrity of help. But Caption Call is my employer. I am an advocate, I do community outreach, I work with great partners like Anthem across the state of Virginia to help raise awareness. It is a federally funded program that provides captioning telephones for anyone. There is no income, there is no age restrictions, there's no insurance requirement. So if you know someone personally or professionally that does struggle hearing on the phone, then this program is available to anyone in the United States if they need captions to communicate effectively. There is a piece in here that shows a picture of the telephone. It works like any other telephone, and we currently are the only company that are, that's able to provide this phone to those in rural areas or in low-income areas that have not had internet in the past. Internet is a requirement that allows captions to come across the screen so people can read what somebody's saying to them in real time while they're listening. So like my hearing loss, I can hear when you're talking to me. I just don't sometimes understand what you've said. That is my disconnect between my ear and memory. So having those words there is very important, and it has been a restraint for people that didn't have access to internet. So my big goal this year is to reach out into our more rural areas, or less underserved areas and population, to help let them know that this service is available to them at no cost. It's a provision of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is fully funded through taxes that we all pay on our phone bills since the early 90s, actually. So you've been contributing into this fund if you've ever paid a home or cellphone bill. We do have technology available to help some, not all, but many that don't have a landline. So there are resources that are available to those that weren't prior to the pandemic, so that's part of why I'm here to share with you. I think I've kind of put a lot of information out there, but the biggest part is letting you know that these programs and services are there. I am here to support each and every one of you and the citizens of the city of Roanoke, and any efforts that you want to push forward going into the future to help better serve people with hearing loss. Did anyone have questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, thank you so much for coming, first of all, during this crazy weather we're having. I appreciate you, you know, rescheduling and coming back because it is really good information. My first thought were our students at school. Have you done a presentation for the schools? Because I'm thinking, you know, with the virtual learning and the online platforms that we have, perhaps some of the kids with hearing problems might benefit from, from this service. So I don't know if you've had a chance to speak with anyone at the schools or not?
I have not in, in these districts here in this area. I do reside in the Midlothian area, I'm a little bit more connected. And we are, we were just recently acquired. We are now a minority-owned business. Our CEO is Jorge Rodriguez, and we are developing some great outreach initiatives for young and old, so I hope to see that we are going to integrate some more programs to touch the younger-based people that have hearing loss in the school system. So I will make that noted, that this will be our first trial area once we get those programs set up.
Oh, I'm sure it'll take time. I just thought about our students, because they're, I'm sure even more so now, they will be online and doing virtual learning, so this might be helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Bettina. I think this is great. I think this, our senior living communities could really benefit from something like this, as well as our seniors who are living independently.
Absolutely.
And so I'm glad to hear that you're going to do a, an outreach effort. One thing you said, did I hear you say correctly that this is connected with internet availability?
In the past, for the captions to come onto the screen in real time, you had to have internet, and obviously that has limited so many across the nation. But we did, when the pandemic shut everybody down, air demand went through the roof, and we were so thankful to be able to come up with technology that provides real-time internet to our phone only. So people that had, did not have access in the past can now currently have access with or without internet. So we're very excited about that.
Thank you. That connected the dot for me. So that's, that's really important to know.
Yeah, that's very important.
Because even though we're, we're seeing expansion of broadband, which is so critical, not only in our city and, and parts of our city that have not had access, but in the rural communities surrounding us, and particularly in southwest Virginia, having that access and having this service and bringing those together is just extraordinary.
Absolutely. And that little half-sheet I did put in there, just as some ideas I thought of for ways to help advocate or... for ways to help advocate or, you know, help, you know, maybe start something in your community. So again, if you have questions, please reach out and I'll help, you know, support in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Jeffrey. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for the presentation. One question I have, the actual phones. I'll make sure I understand. So you provide the free phones?
The captioning service is what's funded by the FCC. Well, we're regulated by the FCC. Air taxes that go into this fund fund the actual captioning service. So we have 12 captioning centers across the country that translate basically what somebody's saying into text captioning on someone's phone. So the phone itself, you know, they can still hear on it. They can turn up the volume, but they have those words on the screen.
So is the functionality equivalent to, like I have this iPhone and Androids?
Basically the same thing. You can make and receive calls. It doesn't affect your existing phone service. It's designed to work in conjunction with. So if we are able to pair it somehow with your cellphone, then it's still working just through your regular cellphone number, cellphone service, and no added expense. On the landline side, for those that still have home telephone service, we connect it just like an extra phone in the house. If you and I went to Best Buy or Walmart and picked up an extra phone for Nano and went over there and put it in the kitchen for. So the service is funded through the federal program. The phones, the support, the installation, delivery, and setup, that is all provided through our company at no cost. So there is never anything passed on to the end user. They're not going to get an addition-to bill down the road or a $5 shipping fee when somebody comes to bring it to their house. So everything is fully covered at no expense.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great. Ms. Sanchez-John.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. My question is language. How many is it available in different languages or is it just in English?
Currently, it is available in English and Spanish. We are working with some artificial intelligence programming and things like that to expand the various languages. And one of the visions of our CEO is hopefully to expand into other markets as well for captioning interpretation. We do have a video relay service side for the deaf community and that's available in some other languages. But the captioning phone right now currently is just English and Spanish.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask you something, Lisa. And I think what the vice mayor mentioned is a good idea in terms of the school system. We talked. I hadn't mentioned that, but now that I think about it, that's a good way to get out there and let people know. Let me ask you, if I got the phone put in and someone calls me and they leave a message, does that message come across or do I have to do something to get in the message or I can just read the message?
Well, that's a good question. The way our phones are set up, there's a couple of ways we can connect it with your existing answering service. So some people still have an old-school separate answering machine. We can, our phone has a built-in answering machine. Some people have voicemail through their service providers. So we're installers when they come in. And my installer here is Misty Worley. She's a wonderful person. Been with her company for about two years now and she's very passionate about helping people. But she will determine what is existing and then set up the phone. So you are going to be able to have your voicemails captioned when you play them back, which we all love because we normally sit there and play it back two, three, four times. So you have it right there in front of you to read. And then the other thing that comes to mind is whether you're talking live to someone or you're playing back a voicemail, you have the option to save that. So if you're talking to someone, your doctor, your lawyer, the bank, you know, a family member about dates, times, important follow-up care, anything like that, after you hang up, you have the option to save what has been said. So you can go back and review it yourself. You can share it with a loved one, a caregiver. The same thing goes with the captions of the voicemails, obviously. You can save that in the phone. And it's only retained in the phone. Privacy is, you know, 110% a big thing with, you know, captioning services. So there's never any concern about it being out there in a cloud or, you know, for someone else to access. One thing I do want to also mention is over various counties in Virginia, I've worked with Triad, the sheriff department, the Triad Services. And I did years ago have a sheriff point out, this is a great tool for someone that might be, someone is being abusive, you know, trying to scam them on the phone. It can't print out what someone has said, but at least it's retained in there. So if they did need to call someone in for help, then it is right there. So a picture of the screens or whatever has been said. So there might even be a little bit of added safety comfort for some people, especially if they live alone.
All right. Well, thank you. As Councilmember Cobb said, I think this is a good idea and a thing that I like about it most, that it doesn't cost anything.
Yeah. Well, we all have paid taxes on it. So it's one of those blessings that we actually can take advantage of. You know, we pay taxes onto our roads and sometimes we think, well, this is not my road that I paid for because I'd fill in that puddle. You know, so that's a nice feature to be able to share with some that are a little leery when you say no cost. But I do thank you all for having me and I hope that over the next few months, we do have some hearing assessment initiatives coming up where we have some online assessment screening tools available. So if you want to set up something for employees or something like that to be able to go in and just do just a basic hearing assessment. It's not a true hearing test, but we have that initiative coming on board right now. And then we also have some other things for hearing assessments out in the field. So community events, you know, with our KIOS testing equipment and things like that. We might be able to better, you know, do some grassroots projects to get, allow people to be able to, you know, at least get that first initial feel of a hearing assessment and then they can go on to a professional after that if needed. So thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mason?
I'm sorry. I have one more thing to add. You know how you say, in training you say, you hear something negative, say something. Hear something, say something. Well, I'm going to do this. If you hear something good, share something. If you hear something positive, share it. So that's what I did with Lisa. And I saw everybody's eyebrows up because it's almost in disbelief, but it's out there. And I heard this and I wanted to share with my community. So thank you, Lisa, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for that. All right. So we'll receive and file this information. And I think hopefully if you was watching today, this word will get out that this is an opportunity to help a lot of citizens here in the city.
And we have a lot of viewers.
Thank you all. All right. Now we're going down to item number seven, which is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. And there's a briefing. And I'm going to call on our city manager to introduce the briefing to us.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We do have a brief briefing today, which is on our emergency operations plan. And I'm going to assume that Battalion Chief Trevor Shannon is going to do this. So I'll have him come up to the podium and then get you started. And we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. So thank you.
Thank you. Is it? Do we have the briefing already pulled prepared or? All right. Good afternoon, all. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. As you know, Battalion Chief Trevor Shannon, the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Roanoke. I do work under the direction of the city manager, also known as the Emergency Management Director. And then I work under the leadership of the Fire and Emergency Department with Chief Hoback and Chief Gwynn. So I want to say thank you for this opportunity to present this 10- to 15-minute presentation on our emergency operations plan. I'm going to start off with some very basic information about the emergency management program here in the city of Roanoke and then move into the emergency operations plan with the intent of leaving you all a copy for the next meeting. So the agenda for this brief discussion is the emergency management overview, followed with a couple of the recent declarations that we've had over the past year. The emergency operations plan discussion, intended revisions to that plan, and then the council request at the end, of course. So by definition, emergency management is the managerial function charged with creating the framework within which communities reduce vulnerabilities and hazards and cope with disasters. The program that we run here is an all-hazards emergency management program, meaning we deal with anything from technological hazards to environmental hazards and everything in between. As you know, over the last two years, we've been in a state declaration to some degree in the largest pandemic in the history of the country. And we've had numerous other disasters that I'll discuss a little bit more. Many years ago, the program of emergency management was designed with four phases. That was prevention, mitigation, response, and recovery. Over the last several years, they've added protection to that. So now we're in a five-phase approach to emergency management. So as you know, my role is to support each of these five functions. So our emergency management program, we start from the very basic beginning, including this emergency operations plan. And we work through any disaster situation all the way through the recovery phase to when things are back to what we call normal. The emergency operations plan for the city of Roanoke is an all-hazards plan. It helps to manage program resources and responsibilities. And I'm going to discuss each of those a little bit more in detail when we get to the emergency operations plan. But just to give you an idea, at this time, the document is 430 pages. So when I asked if I could send that to you, 430 pages was not appropriate for today. So I will make sure you get it, but it will likely be an electronic version. But it's a lot to keep up with, as you know. Another thing I want to talk about in our emergency management program is some of the new concepts that we've developed over the last two years. One of those being the tablets that we're now using for multiple languages spoken throughout the city of Roanoke. You know, the emergency operations plan helps us guide these decisions and helps us implement new ideas and new concepts so that we can better our program and really make the city of Roanoke resilient. So we continue to look at this plan. We continue to evaluate it, especially when we're in a disaster or post-disaster. But this is all things that come from that emergency operations plan. As I stated, I wanted to talk about some of the declarations that we've had in the past year, year and a half. And I have these kind of listed out, so I'll try to make sense of that. But the COVID-19 pandemic was a federal declaration and we also declared locally. Tropical Storm Arthur, we declared locally. Civil unrest in May, we declared a state declaration as well as locally. And I say all these things just to let you know that when we declare locally, it's because resources are strained and/or we feel that we're going to need support from outside resources. So the best response to that question is when I contact VDEM and I say, hey, I'm thinking about declaring locally. What's your thoughts? And they say, do you have the resources to respond? And ultimately, we did not in most of these situations. The COVID-19 pandemic, there was some concern whether or not we were going to be able to get the appropriate protective equipment or the right resources here to run the many vaccine clinics that we had or, you know, the different test sites that we had to run and we continue to run. So these are some of the reasons and the thoughts that we go through and I work with city leadership and management to make these decisions. But they often don't come easy. Tropical Storm Arthur is another great example of just having resources available to us in the community. That picture there is actually the Ramada Inn. The National Guard was in town for the COVID-19 pandemic. They were staged to assist with vaccine clinics and other COVID-19 response. However, at the time, we had COVID patients at the Ramada Inn that we felt needed to be evacuated and the National Guard supported our mission. We were very fortunate to have them here just because of the work that they were able to do. Whereas if we had to put boats in the water with our swiftwater rescue team, it would have been a whole lot more time-consuming and a lot more risky. So we were very fortunate to be in that situation there and very grateful for them supporting. And then, of course, the civil unrest, we declared locally because we had a lot of outside agencies here to support us. Fortunately, we did not need to utilize many of those resources, but it was worthwhile to have them in our emergency operations center supporting that mission. So the city of Roanoke prepares and maintains the emergency operations plan. This is the piece that comes out of my office and it's done in conjunction and coordination with many other city offices, city personnel, city leadership, and our staff. It is in accordance with the Code of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, Section 2-126 and the Commonwealth of Virginia Emergency Services and Disaster Laws, Title 44, Chapter 3.2. I will say too, I have to say thank you to the city attorney's office because this year I actually did bounce some ideas off of them to make sure that our plan is updated in accordance with city code or state code. So that was very helpful to have them on that end really willing to get into this and look at it for me. And I had a conversation with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, Region Six Planner, who's a colleague of mine here locally. And his staff at the VDEM state offices were very impressed that we had an attorney's office that was willing to really support this plan and get into it and read it. So I'm grateful for that. That's just a piece of that coordination. The council of the city of Roanoke adopted the current plan on November 4, 1996, with the most recent revision on March 7, 2016. And we'll talk about those dates here just a little bit. So according to FEMA, local government must act first to attend to the public's emergency needs. Depending on the nature and size of the emergency, state and federal assistance may be provided to the local jurisdiction. The local EOP focuses on the measures that are essential for protecting the public. These include warning, emergency public information, evacuation, and shelter. So one of the things you hear a lot in emergency management is all disasters start and end locally. So while we're still here trying to pick up the pieces, VDEM and FEMA and these state agencies are trying to pull out, right? So we're still here trying to make that all work. And that's why we start from the very beginning and we take it all the way through the very end. But that's also why our emergency operations plan needs to be all-inclusive and it needs to cover all of these different pieces that we work through. So the Code of Virginia requires EOP revision and city council approval every four years. However, due to the pandemic, that had to be suspended. So I was in consultation with the Department of Emergency Management. We worked closely on that and they understood some of the delays. The problem with the emergency operations plan is really ideal that you would have a whole lot of people involved in trying to review that and make sure it all makes sense. But during the pandemic with offices closed and people out of work and just not having the ability to get people in large groups, it was a little bit more challenging and rightfully, we delayed that. So we're in consultation with the emergency management staff on that. All right. The EOP is our playbook, from preparedness initiatives through the final closeout of recovery efforts. Like I said, it's 430 pages. It talks about all the different roles and responsibilities to coordinate effort to a response to a major incident. And as I talked about, that can be flooding. That can be a terrorist threat. That can be anything from a pandemic and so on and so forth. It's my duty to make sure that that is used, that we follow it, that we understand it, and that our city, our employees, and our residents are able to see that. So once this is approved and updated, we'll make sure it's posted and available for people to view. It provides that emergency service operations be structured around existing constitutional governments and that city council, in the event of emergency, confer upon the city manager or a predetermined representative. In the absence of the manager, the authority to act in accordance with Section 44-14621 Declaration of Local Emergency. And I talked a little bit about that. So what has changed since that 2016 revision? I'm going to talk about each of these in a little bit more detail. But for now, the EOC activation levels, this is a brand-new concept that we're bringing to the city. The basic plan had a change to the declaration. The basic plan had a change to the declaration status just to match city or state code. Backup EOC location was added. ESF-2 was modified slightly, just by adding this designated authority, and ESF-2-10 sewage bill, we added parks and rec. And I'll talk more about that individually, but a lot of you are probably wondering what an ESF is.
Yes.
The ESF is an emergency support function. There are 17 in our emergency operations plan. Each of those emergency support functions have a department that is the leader of it. So for example, ESF-3, Public Works. Public Works is the leader of ESF-3, however, there are about eight to 10 other departments that support ESF-3. So if we open the EOC and we have directors from each department down there, they're divided into these ESFs. ESF-4 is firefighting, ESF-9 is search and rescue, ESF-10 is oil and hazmat, and the list goes on. So you understand that each person has a responsibility, but they can coordinate with the others. ESF-3, for example, Public Works, police, emergency management, attorney, planning, building and development, Western Virginia Water Authority, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of how these work and they break out. Those ESFs give the roles and responsibilities and kind of organizes that response. So that's their guidebook, their playbook, as I mentioned earlier. So in the basic plan, we changed this one paragraph. In the event the governing body, city council, cannot convene, due to the disaster or other exigent circumstances, the director, or in his absence, the deputy director, or in the absence of both the director and deputy director, any member of the governing body may declare. And that's simply for the local declaration. There was some confusion in the way it was originally worded because we now have a deputy city manager that was once a assistant city manager. So that kind of changed the way we use the word deputy in our emergency operations plan. We really had to look at that, and that's where the city attorney's office assisted and made sure that we were in line with Commonwealth of Virginia code. In ESF-2, the emergency management director or designated authority will be available for making decision-making as required. And then in ESF-10, we're talking about adding the Parks and Rec Department to the oil and hazardous materials just because of the waterways and the greenways and everything that could be impacted in the event of an incident like that. And again, that decision was made in part with Christopher Blakeman, who took the time to review the plan and provide guidance. And that's how we make these updates and make them right. We have added our backup EOC location as 1830 Blue Hill Circle, northeast, in Roanoke, Virginia, 24012. There's a picture of the emergency operations center at Blue Hills Drive. That is during the first ever Ironman triathlon, and we thought that there was no better opportunity to showcase that space than to use it for that event. And I'll tell you, it was a fantastic space. We're very grateful for the 911-811 center to allow us to use that as a backup EOC. Just a great facility, worked perfectly for the event. We thought it was very central to Bodatot, Roanoke County, Roanoke City, and again, an opportunity to use that space and really showcase what they've done there, so. Here's the EOC activation levels, and I apologize, it's very small font, but what we did is we took our EOC activation and we went level one, level two, level three, level four, red, orange, yellow, and green. So green is normal state. Yellow is a virtual emergency operations center. Orange is a partial activation, and red is a full activation. My intent here is, over the next three to four months, we'll have a new mass notification system in the city of Roanoke. What I would like to be able to do is input each of these activation levels, and if we have an incident that maybe is just a vehicle accident on 581, and we only need a partial activation where we need transportation, fire, EMS, and police, we hit partial activation on this mass notification. It alerts the right people and they come to the EOC. I think what this does for us is it saves our resources, it saves time and effort and allows those other directors the ability to stay at work or continue doing what they do on a daily basis where they're not pulled into the EOC to really monitor something that they shouldn't have to worry about. So that's a very new thing, but I had taken this idea from some other localities that I had looked at, and I think it's a great way to really use the resources that we have. The virtual EOC obviously is a fairly new concept. That's something that we probably hadn't heard much about over the last several years until the coronavirus pandemic. So that has certainly opened up options for us to use and to be able to do that. And we have had several communications via Zoom or other multimedia ways, so it's been And in closing, in the February meeting, we would like to adopt this 2020, 2022 version of the emergency operations plan for the city of Roanoke, so I'll make sure you get the copies of that. Again, I want to say thank you for supporting the initiatives, the emergency management program here in the city of Roanoke, and for the opportunity to present this information today.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
The only thing I'd like to add, Mayor, of course, is to thank Trevor for the work that he has done, and of course, you know, this is the behind the scenes work. You all know Trevor's work here recently during the pandemic and everything from helping set up the first vaccine and testing clinics that we had, along with VDEM or VDH and others as well. And what he didn't really mention specifically is those three events that he identified actually were all happening at the same time, which is pretty unusual and pretty rare as well, and certainly rely heavily on Trevor and his leadership when we do activate the EOC and others as we move through. So I certainly want to thank him for that work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I did have one question. You talked about the revision date of 2016. Do you just revise the EOB when you have, I mean, EOP when you have like a significant event, or is it reviewed periodically, or is it just in response to like, you know, the civil unrest and the flood or et cetera?
That's a great question. So ideally, I review it as often as I need to, you know, but after any event, we're going to review it, and that gives us an opportunity to really critique whether or not this worked or that worked. Every four years, it's due for revisions, but we certainly look at it a lot more than just once a year or twice a year. It definitely needs to be looked at after any incident to really make sure you're in line. And in fact, I just finished a class this past week that talked about this, and it was very specific. You know, if you have an event, you should be looking at your plan, because the problem is, is really, how many people know about this plan? And it's my job to educate them. Once this new version comes out, we're going to push it out. We're going to make sure social media has it. We're going to do things to educate city staff, employees, residents, all those people. And we want feedback on it, so if they see something that doesn't work, we need to make that correct. But yes, we do look at it more often.
Then, are you going to put the entire plan, or will you pull out some specific bullets that might be helpful? Because that's sometimes the problem. We're trying to figure out ways to get our community engaged with what we're doing because a lot of people are not aware of what we're doing or what's happening, and sometimes it gets buried. And so is there going to be like an abbreviated version? Because 120 pages, I'm not sure. You know, it might take me a while to get through it.
Yeah, so sure. So the good thing is, is there's a basic plan that comes with this, 34 pages.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
You know, that's a little bit more manageable. So that's not, you're not having to read every ESF, right?
Okay, that's my plan.
Yeah, so every ESF can vary from six to 15 pages, really. So that adds a lot of the bulk of that paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
But the basic plan covers a lot of what we really focus on here in our response.
Thank you. I learned a lot today. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments and observation. Excuse me. One is, thank you for the briefing on that. And also, I recall when you came before the Virginia Municipal Clerks and you did the disaster presentation for Marcy Stone, you did that, I believe, and that was a great presentation. We got a lot of comments on that, so I thank you for it. One of the questions I have is, how often do you update the plan, the emergency disaster plan?
I think I just said...
Right, but I mean, is that every year, or do you just do it on?
Every four years by Code of Virginia.
Yeah.
But we can update it. If this next year, probably, I'm going to have to do another update because I will have this new mass notification system, and I really want that to be included. So I'll probably do another update within the year or so if we get that implemented. So you can update it a little more regularly, but it doesn't have to be as formal of a process.
Right, okay. And the other one is, do you still do your situation updates in the EOC that used to occur when there was a disaster going on? You would meet on a regular basis? And as you said, certain departments would come together. You called it a situation update or the Situation Room at that time.
Sure, yes. We do. It's been a little different over the last year and a half or so, really since I took this position in 2019, just because we've been in a pandemic for the majority of it. But those situation briefs still occur regularly. One of the things with the winter storm, for example, is Dwayne Darden and his crew have done a fantastic job of organizing the leadership. And so while it's really a transportation-driven incident, I still look at that as part of our situational briefing, and he includes the right people on that so that we're all getting the right information. And then I regularly send out weather updates to a certain group, so I have groups created for each of these briefings that are, you know, relevant to the situations, what I try to do.
Thank you. Good information.
Thank you.
Councilman Collins.
So my big question is, how do you stay calm in a disaster?
No pressure to answer that. I've got good leadership and guidance above, that's what I can tell you. I've got, you know, I've got support from our staff here, and I've been very fortunate to be, you know, to be given the right people to work with, so we're just fortunate to have a good team. I've got to give credit where credit's due.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your leadership. This morning, we had our monthly faith leaders call, which we've been doing now for two years. It's hard to believe. But you shared some information, I think I'd like, to me, it's a celebration of your work, but what you've been able to do locally in collaboration with our faith leaders, the state is kind of looking to you all now for guidance and leadership on that. Can you talk a little bit about just how the work you're doing locally with our community partners is having a broader reach throughout the state?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so this morning, we were on the faith leaders meeting, and I just kind of mentioned in my intro that I am now a part of the VEMA, the Virginia Emergency Management Association Faith Leaders Caucus, and that started just within the last three months or so. This was an effort on the part of VEMA. It's an association that I've been a member of. Several of our department members are members, but they reached out and wanted members, and so I put in for it. And when they asked me what I could give back, I said, well, number one, we have this in the city of Roanoke, and number two, prior to me starting in my role, we had an intern working with the local faith leaders in providing information on creating emergency operations plan and plans for response, recovery, and security initiatives. So I felt like it was a good opportunity to take what I've learned here and what we've already built here and give back. So just this last meeting, we actually had the Department of Homeland Security Faith Leaders Caucus present to us as VEMA representatives. So we're really excited about this initiative, and we hope to continue moving forward with it. So we have all kinds of plans and new surveys going out to our faith leaders and ways that we can help make them a little bit more resilient and safe, as we know that they're a big part of the community and can really make us more resilient, so. Thank you.
Any more questions? Trevor, great job, and thank you for your continued involvement in our community in all of these areas, especially in the emergency services and going out and willing to speak. I appreciate that, and thank you for your service. And I also want to recognize Chief Hoback, who's here with us today. And Chief, you always got, the mic is here for you. If it's something we need to know, you want to tell it. All right, thank you. Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you all.
All right, we're going to go down to our next items, items that are recommended for And item number one is the acceptance of the 2022 Violence Against Women Act, which is VSTOP grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice for the police department's existing domestic violence specialist position. There's a resolution and a budget ordinance. I need a motion for the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2022 VSTOP grant made to the city of Roanoke by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, are there any comments or discussion by members of the city council? Let me say, I'm always proud of this, and I think Councilman Best Pitch and I probably were the only two. At one time, we didn't have a domestic violence part or domestic violence section in our police department, and I think it's, we started a few years ago, which evolved out of our domestic violence task force that we were working in. So I'm pleased that we're doing that and that this domestic violence specialist person, it tells us that we're giving emphasis in our city, and we always have, to domestic violence issues and things that have come about, so I'm pleased to accept this grant. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call her up.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Simone Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right, there's the budget ordinance. Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the police department domestic violence program grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call her up.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Simone Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two is the approval to allocate remaining emergency solutions grant CV2 funding for activities to address the preparation, response, the preparation, response, and recover from the effects of COVID-19 for persons homeless or at risk of being homelessness. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph.
A resolution approving the allocation of $309, $182 remaining in emergency solutions grant CV2 funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into written contracts with the subrecipients of such funding.
All right, any comments or discussion?
If I could maybe give a little bit more information on this item there, just to clarify some of what's in the accompanying information, but not really apparent on the agenda information as well. So these are funds that we received from HUD, which were a special allocation associated with COVID. These are specifically focused on addressing homelessness issues with those, and we, of course, have already awarded most of these funds. These are funds that actually either, projects that were not able to be completed or were completed but at a lower cost than anticipated. So I'm going to kind of explain a few things of what this will, these allocations will fund. So with Family Promise, that's an emergency sheltering program that it will fund. With TAP, it's a continuation of their rent relief program, so helping people actually pay their rent that has fallen behind. That's a complement to what the state program is that's in place already. With our homeless assistance team, this will add two additional outreach personnel, so it'll be two more folks. We already have two plus an intern, so that'll bring us to five total outreach individuals. And with the Council of Community Services, this adds rapid rehousing funding as well as an additional casework. as well as an additional caseworker, and of course, additional funding for the management of our homeless information system. And there is a small amount for the first time out of this for administration money. So the $15,000 is actually for administration on that piece of it. But that's what this particular one, and that will close out the funding that we have received for the CARES Act. Of course, that's separate and apart from all of the other HUD funding that we receive, which has another process that's underway currently, and actually, I think tomorrow actually is the deadline for applications for that program. Also, if it's okay, I'd like, this is a good opportunity to kind of acknowledge the work that this staff has done on these programs. I want to kind of set the stage for you. These ESG dollars, again, these are dollars that we receive to address homelessness issues. In a typical year, we would receive about $159,000, $160,000. That's what we would receive for those efforts. Under the CARES Act, we received 1.3 million, so significantly more, which is great, but it also brings significantly more work for the staff. And we did not obviously significantly add to the staff in order to do that. We also, overall, typically, we receive about 2.5 million in HUD fundings. Over the last couple of years, again, with the CARES Act funding coming into play, that has been in excess of $3 million. And of course, these all go toward housing rehab, affordable housing programs, mental health programs, food banks, emergency shelters, street outreach, rapid rehousing, code enforcement, as well as the management of our target areas, which, of course, we're now working in Belmont Fallon, having just, or wrapping up work in Melrose Orange Target area. So certainly want to acknowledge the work that Keith and his staff have done to make this happen, and the community panel that assists him in this effort. So specifically, I want to acknowledge Keith, but also Laura Burleson, Hope Browning, Antoine Callaway, and Raquel Nunes, all who have helped do that. So certainly appreciate the work that you all have done, because I know that they have, normally, there's like one time a year you do this, and then you implement it. It has been nonstop since COVID had started. The good thing is, money continues to arrive to help our community. Again, challenging thing is, that means they're repeating a process they usually do once, that they'll have to do multiple times through the year. And so certainly, I want to acknowledge that effort and the difference that they've made in the community with these dollars. Trevor showed you the incident at the Ramada, and the folks that were in there that were being housed because of COVID, were in there being housed because of programs associated with this. That's where the funding comes from, still is funding going toward those efforts as well. So again, just want to thank you all for the work that you all have done with that. With that, I'll answer any other questions that you might have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, sir. Please answer my question. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call over?
Mr. Jeffrey.
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. Don't know whether to handle this through an amendment or if it can just be corrected, but under the second line item, it should read Council of Community Services instead of Consul? So I'm not sure.
I think if you acknowledge that in with this discussion, it can just be changed.
Can we just be?
Just the script here is there, and of course, just be correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call over.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number three is the execution of Amendment Number Five to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke and Rutherford Partners LLC in connection with the new transportation facility. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Five to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and Rutherford Partners LLC dated September 17, 2019, to provide for, one, the sale and transfer of Campbell Court as described below from the city to developer, and, two, the acquisition of the future rail station parcels as described below by the city from developer, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion or comments from council?
Mayor, if I can again explain this. And this will probably, hopefully, suffice for two or three items that you have today as well. But again, these have been confusing all along, and they continue to be confusing. So I want to try to add a little bit of clarity to these. And we actually had hoped that there wouldn't be an Amendment Number Five, but unfortunately, there is. So these are all tied, obviously, with the work that's underway currently with the transit transfer station that is under construction currently. And as you all know, we have, the city has entered into an agreement with a party being History Partners and others in order to, and when I say city, keep in mind, we're really talking, in many cases, GRTC and city as well. So I'll use those kind of interchangeably. The transfers that are going on is, we, of course, in GRTC, acquired the property that the transit station's being built on currently. We are a partner with the FTA, who is funding the majority of the Federal Transit Authority, who are, the majority of funding is coming from. Of course, we and the FTA jointly owned, GRTC and the FTA jointly owned, the Campbell Court facility. So we're transferring a piece of that ownership over to the new facility. And of course, their role is becoming more significant, because that building was 30 years old. This will be a brand-new building, so the FTA will, in effect, be our partner for longer in that building as well. What that allowed us to do is to actually make available the Campbell Court property for redevelopment purposes. That's where History Partners came in. They, of course, presented to the council some years ago a proposal, which was accepted by the council, to redevelop that property. And so that property will be provided to the, to History Partners and others. And in exchange, there's some things that they're doing, obviously. One of those is, they are paying for the temporary facility that is located on the transit station property right now. So if you go over there right now, there's a collection of temporary mobile units over there. And that's why, because come the end of this month, hopefully, we'll begin operations out of that area to vacate out of the Campbell Court facility. That's being paid for by the developer that will redevelop the Campbell Court facility. They're also trading a piece of property, which is the referred-to Rutherford property, which is directly adjacent to the Wells Fargo Tower and to the Amtrak platform. And this is where Marsh McLennan Insurance Company is located. The significance of that transfer, obviously, is that allows us to redevelop a part of that building for a eventual train station, which was a part of our agreement with the state when Amtrak was extended into Roanoke. The reason we're doing Amendment Number Five is because closing was scheduled for the end of this month. And at the 11th hour, our partner, the FTA, required us to renew the appraisals on the property. We've actually done those twice, I think, already. This will be the third time. Those appraisals are underway. And then FTA has to actually review those appraisals and finalize them. So that's the reason for the extension and the reason for this agreement as well. Later today, you'll actually receive another item, or you've scheduled an item that is associated with a lease on the property. And that's the property that is the Rutherford property, where, again, Marsh McLennan has their insurance offices located. Once this closing takes place, we will own that building. They will still be tenants in that building. And so that's why the lease agreement is to be able to facilitate that continued arrangement while they seek a new location in downtown as well. So those are all those moving parts that are associated with it. It's actually more confusing than that, because, again, you have to introduce into this GRTC along with the city. And there's some changes going on between GRTC and the city that are inside the language. But essentially, that's what's going on, is at the end of this, the Campbell Court property will be redeveloped by the private developer in that location. We will have the new transfer, transit station over where it is under construction, and we will own the building where eventually the train station will be located, or inside as well. So hopefully, that reduces some of the confusion, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle. This is some exciting stuff. We've started to move, and it's good to know. It's good to know. Any other comment from members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call over?
Mr. Jeffrey.
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number four is the execution of Amendment Number Five to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke and Greater Roanoke Transit Company in connection with the new transportation facility. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Five to the First Reinstated Agreement for the Exchange of Real Estate between the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and Greater Roanoke Transit Company dated September 17, 2019, to provide for, one, the sale and transfer of the GRTC relocation parcels as described below to the Greater Roanoke Transit Company from the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and, two, the acquisition of Campbell Court as described below by the city from GRTC, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call over.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number five is the adoption of a resolution ratifying the acceptance of American Rescue Plan Act funding from the Office of the Attorney General to support community-based gun violence prevention initiatives. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution ratifying and approving the acceptance of American Rescue Plan Act funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Office of the Attorney General to address community-based gun violence prevention programming in the city, and ratifying and authorizing the execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, and I'll call on city manager.
Thank you. I'll work through explaining this one as well for folks. So the state, of course, received its own allocation of American Rescue Plan Acts, as did we from the federal government. It was a combination of work by the governor's office, as well as by the General Assembly, as to where those dollars went. So large sections of that, for example, went to fund things like the broadband effort that's going on across the state. There were other pots of money that were actually dedicated in different ways. In this case, there was about $2.5 million of the state's ARPA money that went to the Attorney General's office for the specific purpose of addressing community-based gun violence. Just like we can, in many of our instances, where, when we award money to a nonprofit, for example, we're actually transferring some of our funds to that nonprofit to accomplish something that we would like to have done with ARPA. In this case, the Office of the Attorney General has agreed to transfer 300,000 of their dollars to us to continue our efforts with gun violence prevention. This will accompany the, our American Rescue Plan Act dollars that are already committed as well. So that'll bring that total to $2.3 million is what will go toward. The efforts still have to be used for the same kinds of purposes. So those range everywhere from paying for overtime with law enforcement on targeted kinds of enforcement, all the way through to community mentoring, mini-grants, those types of things. So this $300,000 has not yet been identified or allocated for its intended purposes as it moves forward, unlike the $2 million that was our funding, which the Gun Violence Prevention Commission has done. Certainly, it would be my expectation that we would seek assistance from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission as to how to allocate these 300,000. This is to actually allow the receipt of those dollars, if you will. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I just have one question, Mr. Kyle.
Sure.
So that funding is going to be increased. Will there be a separate application process for those grants, those mini-grants that we have currently? Or is it?
There is. So the $2 million that we've provided has a section, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission has identified a portion of those dollars to be used for mini-grant programs. There will be an application process attached with that. If any of these dollars similarly were used for mini-grants, I presume they're similar, there would also be an application process.
And those timeframes would be totally different.
They could be. I'm looking at Joe, because he's obviously chairing it. They could be, but I assume they're going to be one in the same.
Just one process?
This money, we're delighted to receive.
Yes, we are.
And this is, this will support programming, which may be regular programming we have. It may be mini-grant initiatives on prevention and intervention. But this, it's also based on the findings of the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment, which we'll be receiving a briefing on
Okay.
in February. So the funding mechanisms and how those will be distributed in the application processes will all be confirmed at our February
Okay.
commission meeting and council meeting. And then I expect shortly after that, distributed to the community.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Let me ask you something, Ms. Spencer. Given we got a new attorney general, a new governor, and there are a lot of things that's being said, that their approach or attitude may be different when it comes to gun violence. I'm not saying it is, but is this subject to their changing, or is this subject to being?
This is why we ratified, we moved very quickly, because we had the prior attorney general who was making these funds available. So they sent us an MOU. We signed it. You're simply ratifying what has already occurred in the previous administration. We had to move quickly, because we didn't want to ask the question of, are you going to change your mind? Someone offers you $300,000, you say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's what we've done. We've said, "This is saying thank you," and authorizing city manager for having already signed the MOU.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have. Any other questions?
That was answered. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, we're ready to call over.
All right. Mr. Jeffrey.
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance is approved. Thank you all for coming by, and at some point, I need to get a chance to talk with you on a few things. But you all got my numbers, like everybody does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding through the Virginia General Assembly and Office of the Attorney General for the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Relief Fund to support the implementation of data-informed strategies that will result in reduced gun violence in local communities disproportionately affected by gun violence due to ongoing matters related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this. 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion by members of council? Let me just say, and as I hopefully have related on this occasion to Councilman Cobb, that I think the PR information about the meetings and gun violence, what we're doing, I think is going very well. I mean, when meetings are held, I see that the media covers it, and that's important for our public to know that, again, we're just not sitting idly by and watching time pass, but we're doing things and working. So I commend the group for getting that information out to our public to let them know that we're doing things on gun violence. We're just not sitting by. All right. Any more that has any comments? Madam Clerk, can you call it over?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Beszcz?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. And now I'm pleased to recognize our city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a few items that I want to bring to your attention. One of those, you may recall that a part of our budgeting process, since we do what we refer to as budgeting for outcomes, is to actually identify a collection of performance measures and indicators that are sort of the report card at the end of the budget to kind of see how things, that's how things were accomplished. That, of course, is alongside the audit, which is, of course, checking in on how things went financially. These are how things went in terms of those outcomes. That Measures and Indicator Report is always presented to you all in January, and this is a copy of it. You will be sent a link after this meeting so that you can view it electronically, as well the public can view it. It's already located up there. If they go onto our city website and go to the page for management and budget, it's referred to as the Measures and Indicators Report, so they would be able to view that. This year's plus all preceding years as well. So certainly, after you've had a chance to, to look at it, if you have any questions, feel free to, to ask me those, and I'll be happy to get that information for you. Also, I sent each of you an email earlier today, but I certainly want to draw attention to it with the Cardinal News, which, of course, is our local online news agency that has covered quite a bit of information. There's an op-ed piece that is in there written by, by a number of people, but including Mark Nelson, our Economic Development Director, regarding some fairly exciting efforts underway inside the Innovation Corridor, and certainly encourage folks to continue to look at that and follow that information as well. And would expect, hopefully, over the next few weeks, we'll be able to get more information about that and make even more progress associated with that. So I want to thank Mark for his work on, on that as well. Also want to take this opportunity to thank those that are still out there right now working on getting the streets clear. Of course, their work started really Thursday into Friday, getting ready, getting the equipment ready, and then ultimately getting the streets pretreated as they, as they went on. Just as a reminder, we have over 1,100 lane miles of streets that we're responsible for that is different than you might find in counties, for example, where the majority of the activity is taken care of by VDOT, not by localities, and certainly many, many more streets than some of the smaller municipalities around us. So again, we have about 1,100, a little over 1,100 lane miles we are responsible for. We dedicate 100, what we refer to as snowfighters. These are the individuals that actually drive the pieces of equipment, working 12-hour shifts on a 24-hour rotation, and they'll continue to do that until their work is completed. During the day, we have about 50 pieces of equipment, so the snowplows and spreaders and other things that you see out there, and about half that many at night as well. There are also, though, folks, in addition to those snowfighters, obviously folks out of stormwater facilities, parks and recreation, purchasing fleet, because all that equipment has to be kept operational as we go along. All those folks have to be fed. In some cases, they have to have a hotel to stay in overnight because they can't get back to where their home is. So all of those folks are essential. Even before last night, we had put down 1,000 tons of salt, and by midday today, we had put down 21,000 gallons of brine that we use for pretreatment as well as during the event itself. Just as a reminder, and I know you all know this, the city's goals are to have 90% of the major streets cleared within 24 hours of the snow ending, ending. So just to remind everyone that's out there, because there were 350 phone messages waiting for our transportation folks this morning. The snow ended Sunday, 11:30 PM, Sunday night, 11:30 PM. So within 24 hours of that time, so 11:30 Monday, is when we expected to have 90% of the major streets cleared, and we had exceeded that already. We had actually achieved that much earlier in the day. We also expect to have 20, 90% within 24 hours after that of our residential streets cleared. That 24 hours actually ends at 11:30 tonight. So by 11:30 tonight, we expect to have 90% of our residential streets passable, is how we would define it. Does not necessarily mean it's down the pavement. It means you can drive on it as we, as we work our way through. So again, I want to thank all of those folks that are involved. The, these are folks that, you know, we've been working with less people than we normally would because we have many people out due to COVID. And so those that are working are working even harder than they typically would, and certainly want to thank them and their supervisors for all of the work that they have been doing as they work, work to get the streets clear, as, as we work through this storm and apparently get ready for the next one at the end of this week as well. Last item, I just want to mention this, and I'll get with you all afterwards individually, but your upcoming meeting in February, because things have gotten pushed because of weather and other reasons, your first meeting in February has probably too many briefings on there, so we need to talk about who ultimately we want to have scheduled on there so I can get word out to them. But I'll, I'll talk with you all individually about that afterwards. That is, those are my reports, Mayor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the manager? Mr. Jeffrey? Bob, question. Is it too soon to kind of get a review on the bag tax? How's that going?
You know, I, I can try to find out. It'll be anecdotal at this point, only because obviously, we won't know anything about revenue that comes in. Of course, remember, the revenue can only be used for purposes such as buying more bags. But we certainly can give you some additional anecdotal information in terms of how, how it's being received, how it's going. You know, the first report we provided, of course, included the fact that you had county retailers who were charging it when not, not subject to the tax, and you also have some retailers who decided at the same time to go ahead and charge for other bags, which they can do as long as they don't associate it with the tax. So that was kind of the first report. So certainly, I can find out more about kind of how things have settled out from there. Again, it'll be anecdotal at this point, and probably will be that way for several months till we get a little bit further into it.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Mr. Cobb?
I just, one other question on that.
Sure.
Have the, has this shipment of reusable bags come in yet?
They have. So those that started, they did right before the snow, actually, so they've been out being distributed. I know the libraries are distributing them as well as they've gone to WIC and SNAP recipients. And my recollection is that was the 5,000 that we were anticipating. There's another order of about 10,000 bags that is still awaiting arrival, so there'll be, there'll be plenty of bags out there and available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb?
Vice Mayor?
Have you considered taking, initially, remember, we had some meetings with some of the, the stores, and they were talking about wanting to participate, you know, free advertising for them. Were they involved in that process? Because, I mean, they, they said they would help pay for them just to get the advertising.
They, they were in the, you know, in consultation early on about getting it distributed and stuff. I think ultimately, it really wasn't that, it really didn't cost any further
Oh, okay.
to actually do it. Now, what we, you know, what we'll have to, because again, once the revenue comes in from the tax, it'll reimburse this cost with it. So I think we're okay
So you'll have money? Oh, okay.
Now, we'll know a little bit more as we get further into it.
Okay.
If we find that we need to distribute more bags or want to distribute more bags than the tax revenue is bringing in, we may want to talk about that.
Yeah, maybe go outside of those, like, social services, just regular folks who want them?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Moon Reynolds?
Yes. The city manager had noted in his updates some great things that I thought was worth sharing with the, with the public, and I didn't know if you got my email on that, Bob?
I did, but I don't remember what they
Okay. One was on the homeless assistance team, the outreach partnership with Rescue Mission. I thought that was, that was a great program initiative that they were starting, and I just thought it would be
Yeah, and that was really working with them and their, the clinicians that work at the mission. So they have folks there that help provide mental health services as well as medical health services. So they did a pilot with our outreach staff, whereas our outreach staff engages with those homeless individuals that are still sleeping out of doors, this collection of clinicians really accompanied them to try to connect them to services so that, really reaching out into the community rather than expecting them to be at the mission and being able to get those services. So what they'll do now is evaluate how that went and kind of make adjustments, and then hopefully, the idea is that will become a regular part of our outreach efforts as, as we go along, and is a great partnership with the mission as well.
I thought that was great, too, especially the men of health piece by going on site and evaluating them. That's what I thought was really interesting. And the other one was the, where the city received the $2 million from the HUD, funding for healthy homes, their production grant. I thought that was interesting because of the program that was going to include the partnerships.
Yeah, a little more, little more work for our HUD crew as well. So we did receive word last week that we received $2 million out of a competitive grant process, and I believe, my recollection is, maybe there were three communities in Virginia. $2 million was the maximum amount that you could receive, and we did. The other communities in Virginia received slightly less than that. And there will be a collection of partnerships in our community, the variety of partners. And the idea is to really build on what we already do for our Lead Safe Program. We have a very robust program of removing lead hazards from homes. This will actually look at other things like mold as well as air quality and some other kinds of items, and with our partners, we'll be able to start addressing those issues. So this is actually, I think, a first for us in that it not only involves our HUD folks, but in addition to those community partners, this also involved our sustainability and environmental staff as well in trying to really make the homes more sustainable, environmentally friendly, and of course, healthy. So very pleased that we were able to get it, very pleased that HUD entrusts us with this program. And my guess is, from what the information they provided us, it'll be a few weeks before they give us sort of additional guidance on how to run the program, and then we, in turn, will create our local program information and get it out there as well. Thank you.
And the other one was the, the statewide mortgage relief program that is to assist some homeowners who are affected by COVID.
Yeah. There was a program that was put in the pla, put in place in the state of Virginia, which is intended to do just that. There's been a rent relief program for quite some time through, through COVID, but there really hasn't been much focus on those that have mortgages that may also be falling behind as a result of unemployment associated with COVID. So the state has put together a program. They've had the money for a few months, and we're really kind of creating this program. And I think it was two weeks ago that they actually just now, or they just announced the, the program itself. And, and I don't remember, Steffi, unless you have it in there, I don't remember the website that folks can go to.
No, sir, I didn't put that part on here.
So I'll, I'll make sure, it's been out on our social media, but we'll continue to push it out there. It's through Virginia Housing. I just don't remember the exact website, website associated with it.
VHDA.com.
What was that?
VHDA.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So VHDA.com, and that, that program will run for quite some time. There's quite a bit of funding in it to kind of keep things moving forward. And so anyone that is needing assistance with their mortgages due to COVID impacts are certainly encouraged to take a look at that as well. Thank you.
No, thank you. You just put out so much good information on Friday that I just thought it was worth sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cowal. Item eight is reports of committees. A report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriations of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any comments or discussion by members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Beszcz?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. We're now down to item B, which is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city council serves as liaisons or appointees. Are there any comments by members of council? Councilman Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report that the Greater Roanoke Transit Company had our board meeting this afternoon at 12:30, and a couple of highlights from that. We received an update on the downtown transit facility construction, which is actually a little bit ahead of schedule right now. If you go down, you can see the, the buildings, which are Phase 1. The, the footers have been laid down, the, the buildings are starting to show up, the temporary trailers are in place. There's been some initial navigation of the buses there. Once the, that Third Street Station area, once the Campbell Court is closed and, and we start loading people there, they've done some maneuvers, and those have worked very We voted to purchase three all-electric transit buses, so we're making progress on those.
Thank you.
And those are grant-funded, so that's exciting. And, yeah, I guess those were the two main highlights. The other thing I will add is that we, we did review a market, transit marketing plan, and the next step in that is putting out an RFP for a firm to actually implement that marketing plan. So hopefully, that will be underway very shortly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I did have a question with regards to our joint meeting on the sixth. I just want to make sure, would that be held virtually with the housing authority? Has that been?
That option would still exist
Okay.
as long as the emergency warrant that's in effect stays in effect, because that runs through the ninth, is that right?
The 11th.
The 11th. Yeah, so that, that certainly is a possibility, as would be also for you all as well.
So we will be reaching out to the housing authority to discuss it with them, to see how they would like to
Yep. And they may, you know, my, my recommendation, just like we had recommended the school board, is that they make that decision as a board rather than having a couple of members here and a couple of members virtually. It would be better that they decide that they're going to participate in person or participate virtually as a group. So we'll, we'll be reaching out to David and others to kind of
Well, I'll also check with them when we meet next week, on next Monday as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes, it's in regard to my request for a closed meeting. I had talked to a few of my colleagues early and said we might postpone it, but I think we may have to move forward with that because the next meeting is going to have so much on the agenda that it may be complicated, and I'd hate for us to get off schedule. So if my colleagues are amenable to moving forward, which we had already scheduled, I would like to move forward with those evaluations, if we can, or do as many as possible.
Well, don't we have to have a motion for a closed meeting?
You had that on your consent.
It's on the consent agenda.
I'm just saying I would like to move forward.
You did not remove it from the consent.
Oh, I didn't?
No, sir. It's not.
Okay.
I just said that just so those listening will stay in place. Mr. Cowell? Mr. Spencer? Mr. Harmon? Ms. McCoy?
Okay. Is there anything, any other reports on item B by council members? Item number nine is unfinished business. We have none. Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. Item number 11, motions and miscellaneous business. Inquiries or comments by the mayor and members of city council.
Mayor, I do have a comment if I can, please.
All right. Is it on this item?
It's on the one you just on. The inquiries and or comments by the mayor and members of council on that item.
All right.
And that is that I just wanted to commend the Vice Mayor on her efforts for the fundraiser that she's doing, the private fundraiser for $140,000 for the life-size statue of Henrietta Lacks that will be placed in the Henrietta Lacks Plaza across the street. And I just wanted to give her an opportunity, if we could, for her to expand on that venture and how might someone who's interested can contribute to the cause.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Ms. Moon Reynolds, for the opportunity, you know, it's, it's a private venture. It has nothing to do with, my role as Vice Mayor, I am actually partnering with the Harrison Museum of African-American Culture. They are acting as fiscal agent to raise the money. I thought, you know, we've got the plaza, it's just there. People are kind of expecting something to be placed there. So we thought about it, and I'm working with a group of individuals in the community to try to raise some money. So if you are interested, there will be a series of fundraisers. One will be held at the Brandon, I think we're contemplating. One will definitely be held at the Harrison, and perhaps a big gala to try to get some large dollars. I will report, right now, we have over 30-some thousand dollars, and that was just from one meeting. So we are very pleased, we feel confident we will get the money. So if you are so inclined and you want to donate, we are taking $1, $2, $5, $20,000, whatever you would like to contribute, and you can mail that check payable to the Harrison Museum of African-American Culture. And we do ask that in the memo line that you put Henrietta Lacks or Hidden in Plain Sight project, but Henrietta Lacks would probably be less confusing. And that is going to be mailed to a separate PO box. It's PO Box 21054, and that's Roanoke, and the zip is 24018. So we're excited about it. I, I hope we're able to do it. So just go ahead, send your checks. And thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds, for bringing that up.
See, I put you on the right track, and I will be sending in a contribution, and hopefully my council members will also do the same.
Well, I appreciate that challenge as well.
There you go.
I owe you lunch.
Well, let me know when fundraising act two is going to come up on the council.
We certainly will, Mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Vice Mayor White, what is the PO box number again?
Oh, 21054, and the zip is 24018. It's a separate PO box, just to keep the funds separate for this particular project because we expect a lot of checks to be coming in.
Okay. Thank you. And that was a great article.
Oh, yes, and, and an editorial. There's just been a lot of positive feedback on that.
Good.
I'm happy.
Any other inquiries for members of council? Bags is on certain authorities or boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. We have none. So with that, we're going to go into recess, and the council meeting will stand in recess until our 7:00 PM session here in chamber. We're in recess. Thank you.